It's the 27th of May. I'm going to convene the Planning Board and May 27, 2021. We had two work sessions. One had to do with new venture gear and a new warehouse that they're proposing. And we had one on Cravik Drive, one of our first agenda items. Nick, do we have anybody else? On for a work session?
None scheduled for the June 8th work session.
I got a feeling that'll change, but thank you, Nick. They have approval of the minutes. They've been submitted and revised. And would somebody make a motion to approve the minutes, please?
I'll make a motion, Peter.
Thank you, Kathy.
All second.
Doug, second. Thank you, Doug. All in favor?
Kathy, aye.
Peter, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Kevin, thank you. Joe? Did you say aye, Joe? I didn't hear you.
I was muted. Joe, aye. Yep.
Okay. All right. It's carried unanimously. All right, the first item, as I alluded to, was a historic item for many of us on the Planning Board, for the Town Board, and certainly for the applicant, and I think the town and all its residents. Cravik Drive, mixed use. Proposed construction of a multi-story mixed-use building. And the applicant would just like to summarize where we are now.
Lead?
Yes, go ahead. Take.
Okay, yeah, where we're at, as you know, last Tuesday, we met with you to review the projects. We received comment letters from both O'Brien and Gear and from the Planning Board. We've addressed the comments and resubmitted an updated set of plans. There was another late flurry of comments that we've addressed today. And so where we're at is, I guess, we're here ready to ready for any specific Planning Board comments and hopefully gain approval tonight.
Okay. Justin, thank you very much. Does anybody on the Planning Board, we've been through this, this is maybe a couple dozen times, but I'd like to give everybody a last chance at talking if they have any further questions. I think we resolved the ones we had relating to the slope, which is four to one. The reserve parking spots, 11 and 4, and the turnaround. Are any other issues that anybody would like to address or or say that they're comfortable with us moving forward on approval?
I would say I appreciate the last minute revisions regarding the retaining ponds and some of the green space, although it's it's not quite as far, but I think it's a good place to be going into an approval for this project. So thanks for that. I guess my comment really is maybe more for the board is I think we should we should maybe take a closer look at those site features as we continue to review projects in the town, because I think it's something we need we need to look closely at and try and maximize the amount of usable green spaces as much as we can.
Thanks, Doug. Thanks for the suggestion. You know, it's, I know it's always frustrating for the applicant to have things brought up, but sometimes good things happen and out of it. And there's always compromises, but I feel we really, everyone did a great job. So anyone else have any, Kevin?
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is Kevin. I'm just curious, what are the number of parking spaces per apartment?
The number of parking spaces, well, the code is two spaces per unit. What we've done is, you can see it down in the table, we've provided one, for the one, we have a series of one-bedroom and one, and studio, one-bedroom studio apartments. We've applied one space per unit to those those units. And then for the two-bedroom and three-bedroom, we apply two, two spaces per unit. So you can see in the table there.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have 15 in reserve. Is that accurate, Stephanie?
Yes, I believe that 15 were moved into reserve today.
Okay.
They were, yeah, that's not the latest table right there.
Okay, sorry, I know that there are several plan revisions that just came through today. So I might have just pulled up the wrong set, but this is pretty accurate for.
Our overall total parking is 189 spaces. With reserve.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, Ed, do you have any idea who the retail tenants will be?
I don't. I'm not sure if Andy would disclose as well, also, I'm not sure he would.
Ed, do you want to make a comment or just, can you give us the you know, the category? Those tenants you're looking for?
Oh, I think Andy would have to do, would, I haven't been in part of any of that.
No, I meant, I addressed that to Andy. He's muted, but, hi, Andy.
Oh, hey, guys. We're looking for several quick-serve restaurant-type tenants. Given the layout and all of the exterior space, we think it'll bring a lot of good traffic there. Some lower density office would work as well in the large 7,400 square foot section of this. So that's, that's, that's our train of thought right now.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna, the resolution for the Planning Board for the project Cravik Drive Mixed Use, Planning Board 555-20, relating to property at 5795 Bridge Street, identified as text map number 0044.8-20.1. The Planning Board approved the site plan as presented with the following findings and conditions. Findings, this application is before the Board upon referral of the Town Board of the Town of DeWitt, which determined that this project presents an opportunity to project or application of the mixed-use village floating overlay district to the property as set forth in Section 192-64.4 of the zoning code of Town DeWitt. This Board referred this matter to the ZBA, which granted the front yard setback variance requested. Upon review of the final site plan herein, this Board finds that that the project and plans presented are within the spirit and intent of the mixed use and allows for the quote "village center" type of development envisioned by this mixed-use district, including allowing for a mixed commercial and residential use, pedestrian-friendly accesses, features which enhance the area, the plan with its unique circumstances of stormwater ground conditions, drainage and swales has gone a long way to meet the intent of the mixed-use code. And the applicant has worked with the Planning Board to come up with a plan that implements mixed-use code within the confines of this unique site. This Board has revised, the other County Planning Board resolution is reviewed, the County Resolution of March 10, 2021, which set forth the modifications, 1 through 5, which are incorporated by reference herein. As to the modification number one, regarding New York State DOT, the modification is accepted. Regarding modification number two and number three regarding the SWIP, modifications are accepted. As to the modification number four regarding WEP, this modification is accepted. And as to the modification number five, the Board has considered the matters relating to circulation, emergency response, sidewalk, street trees, parking connections, and all matters therein in this design. Accordingly, the modification is accepted. Conditions, number one, phase one of the project, phase two of this project is shown on the plan for reference only and is not approved as part of this approval. Sidewalk two, the sidewalk connection is shown in the plan is satisfactory for phase one of the project. However, the sidewalk connection will be revisited upon further review and approval of phase two and may be modified within the context of phase two approval, particularly with respect to the connectivity on Bridge Street. Three, the reserved parking area must specifically be shown and set forth in the plan. The northeast property boundary, the reserved parking may be built out only upon future findings of the Planning Board that the same is necessary for the viability of the project and that the building of the reserved parking will not impair the project or the intent of the mixed-use zoning. Four is not necessarily, the parking data has been included in the plans. Five, Stephanie, just enlighten me on the change in five.
I don't believe that there was a change in five. We were intending to strike items three and four regarding the reserved parking.
Okay.
There were there was a revision to the lighting. No lighting is intended to be approved. And I wanted to amend the language to read no lighting or lighting components, because the light pole base fixture is not in line with the code requirement.
Okay.
So we'll need a revision on that, too.
Okay, so.
May I back up on on the, I understand that the reserved parking, we're happy about it being shown, but did we also want to talk about it only being built upon a future finding of the Planning Board?
Yeah, we did. I read that.
Okay, I think, I think we want to keep that.
So that stays, okay.
So the reserved parking may be built only upon a future finding of the Planning Board that the same is necessary for the viability of the project and that the building of the reserved parking will not impair the project or the intent of the mixed-use zone.
I read it and I was keeping it in.
Yep, thank you. Okay, so we'll keep that in. Four is out, but the reserved parking is shown, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that part can come out.
Hey, Peter. Regarding the phasing, the resolution refers to phase one, phase two. Is there a diagram that clarifies the boundaries? Because this just refers to building A and building B.
Yeah, I think Stephanie alluded to that on Tuesday. You just have to have sharp eyes to see it.
I'm gonna trace the line, probably very crudely. But this is the line.
Got it. I see it. Thanks.
Okay. All right. So six, no lighting or lighting components are approved. As part of this approval, the applicant must return to the Board, the Planning Board, for review and approval of the lighting plan. Referral, this Board refers the matter back to the Town Board, so that maybe, as set forth in Section 192-64.4 of code, adopt the final legislation establishing the property at 5795 Bridge Street on the zoning map of the town as a quote "mixed-use village floating overlay district" end quote, in accordance with the Town Code. When the zoning code is adopted by the Town Board, there is no need for the applicant to return to this Board, and this site plan approval will be considered the final approval for the Board. Accordingly, this plan, together with the other submitted documents, site plan documents that have been signed by the Planning Board chairperson and the applicant, and requires that all of the work shown be completed by the applicant in order for a certificate of occupancy or compliance to be issued. Any proposed changes, additions, deletion, and scope of the work, materials for the site plan documents are not approved and are subject to the further site plan review pursuant to the Town of DeWitt Code 192-122. I've made the resolution. May I have a second?
All second.
All life, okay. Thank you.
Was that life?
By name, signified by name.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy, aye.
Thanks, Kathy.
Doug, aye.
Thank you, Doug.
Joe, aye.
Joe, thank you.
Kevin, aye.
Thank you, Kevin. Peter, aye. I made the motion. I know that Nathan's not present, and I know that we probably don't allow proxies, but he's very much in favor of this. And I want to commend everybody from the Town Board, to the Planning Development Department, to those on the Overlay Steering Committee and the Planning Board, and certainly all of our consultants, Mark Parrish and Jamie and EDR for their work on this. This is a terrific opportunity for the town, for the residents, for our applicant, and I'm proud to be associated with this. This is the first, we hope, of many overlay districts. It's Tom or Andy, do you want to say anything? Congratulations.
Yeah, I would. I'd like to thank everyone on my team who put this together as well and working closely with the Planning Board and the cooperation of making this thing work is is a tough thing to do, and I'm glad we got it all approved. And I appreciate everybody's participation. And Peter, I know you've worked very hard on this one particularly. And I sincerely appreciate all your effort trying to get this job done, too. So with all that, we all deserve ourselves a round of applause for each other, because we've all put a lot of effort into this thing, and it's a lot of time and effort. And I think the result is gonna be very good for everyone that's involved. So thank you very much from my perspective and the team that we have working on it. So thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Andy, do you want to say anything?
I just appreciate the process and the help getting us here. I think we have a great product, and it was, it was a combined effort. And I.
Mirror everything Tom just said.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to number two, Brian's Landing. Concept for a deck construction. 2,200 square feet in the Hamlet District. We have someone that wants to make the presentation?
What's that? Hi, can you hear me?
Steve, that sounds like Steve.
That's me. How are you, Peter?
Go for it.
Well, we'd like to put some outside sitting at Brian's Landing at Jamesville Hamlet. We've gone through a few discussions with members of the Board. I believe we're in right to do so, and we're looking for feedback and review of the concept so we can get some timely approval so that they can enjoy some post-COVID business at the restaurant during the summer months.
Yeah, I think we've, we've had some online, offline conversations. I think the first is, is that there were some items left over, Steve, relating to the elaborate siding that needs to be finished. That's something that needs to happen. Is that acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure that they really did justice to presenting the project. I mean, can you go into a little bit further?
Go back to that, too.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Doug. The I think it has, the project has a great deal of potential, but there's obviously in the district because of the parking issues and just the spatial issues. I think you've done a very good job. We certainly have some things to resolve, but speak specifically towards what you're looking for, Doug, or anybody else on the Board.
Well, no, my question is for Steve and the applicant is, can you be a little bit, can you dive a little bit deeper into what you're proposing?
Did you, did you get a set of plans? I mean, it's, it's a deck on the left side of the building in a space that does not remove any parking, any accessways, any entrance ways to allow the restaurant to enjoy outdoor seating, you know, feeling the hamlet, the beauty of the river behind it, the creek behind it, serving their patrons on the deck. Did you receive the plans? Do you have the concept?
I'm looking at it on the screen.
Do you have any, do you have any specific questions?
I may have to reserve them till I have some more time. Again, I'm hoping you could take talk a little bit and sell it a little bit. So is it ADA accessible?
Yes.
How do you get onto the?
You haven't seen us before this call?
No, I haven't. This is a concept review.
Steph, can you go back to the site plan?
I'm sorry.
Next one, next one. Page two. There we go.
Steve, would you be able to speak to any restaurant function and the capacity for the deck and how they're intending to function over the summer?
They're gonna be accessing the deck as in servers from the kitchen through the back door there. Patrons will be coming in the front. There will be no food they did receive. I believe they're looking license for it, that they would not allow to be serving from the front. So that's why the deck has been adapted to be served right off the kitchen. I do not have the seats in front of me. I'm sorry, I just got out of my loader. The capacity, I believe, was 35. I've designed a few decks lately, so it should be right there on the spec. And they're, they're trying to enjoy it through the month of May through about October.
Steve, it's also, is it my understanding that the restaurant's been very successful and needs?
Well, the restaurant, you know, that's a distressed community, as everybody on the Board knows. And I drive through there 50, 60 times a day. They did very well on their opening and then got hit by COVID and went through the restrictions and did an unbelievable job with takeout and deliveries through Uber Eats and things of that nature to survive. They have maintained their core staff, which is, they should be applauded for that, because they did basically go through and keep them as well as they could. And now they're starting to get more recognition. And reservations are needed at times, and, you know, they like to have the overflow capacity during the summer months. We did, you know, the Hamlet saw the implementation of another community parking lot. The parks have been resurrected, the creek is there. It's a great place for people to stop by the reservoir, you know, with their kayaks, canoes. Unfortunately, I think the beach is closed because of staffing issues, which most every industry is dealing with right now. But it's a great hotspot to go enjoy the parks, the creek, the reservoir, stop, have a good meal, a great brunch. It's, it's really starting to do better, but they were distressed for quite some time due to COVID and the restrictions. So I mean, they're viable to the point where I think they're breaking even and doing a little bit better than that every day as they go. I mean, the masks and things that got lifted definitely helped all the restaurant industries.
With the material on the deck, I can't tell, I'm not.
Manufactured wood with aluminum cable railings.
You mentioned there was a door out onto the deck, but I don't see it on the drawings.
It's on the backside where the trailer structure is, to the right, on the backside of the building. They have a back entryway with staircase that leads up to the restaurant. It will be going right off of that.
And I don't, it's not on the drawing.
It's not on the drawing, it will be put on the drawing.
Yeah. Is, is that, sorry, back to my question about ADA access onto the deck? Is that how patrons can access it?
Yes, sir.
Because it looks like there's front steps off the sidewalk.
Yes, we could change that into a ramp if necessary on dual access.
If you change that into a ramp from the front, how is the ramp gonna go? Because aren't the stairs right to the line now?
I think we still have about 18 inches to play with. There's only one step, I believe.
Right now.
Further questions?
I think, Peter, I have one. Should there be in climate weather, would there be? Wouldn't want to see a tent put over this thing just to keep the capacity up. Was there, is there thoughts of doing that?
We would like to engage with a sun sail above it for the sun. There are some sun sails that can deter water from falling onto patrons, but in climate weather, I don't believe there's gonna be many people out wanting to enjoy it anyway. So.
Well, I guess as a Jamesville resident, I wouldn't want to see a white tent driving through the village protruding up on a, on a deck just because we're increasing the capacity and trying to, you know what I'm saying? I guess, I guess I'd like to see all that.
I wouldn't want to see a tent on anyone's deck, so I'm on the same page with you, especially white. So we can, we can implement a sun shade on the plans for you. Sun sail.
Just throwing it out there, that's all.
I had to address that, we could have cut that in a resolution as well.
Yeah, no, I completely agree with that.
All right, I think we'd want to see some detail on that, maybe a product cut sheet and then a color sample that would be used.
That's fine.
Are there any further comments or questions on the Board?
Is the intent to have music, live music or speakers out there?
None.
Good question, Doug. Anything else? Stephanie, did you have anything that this is a the next step then is to, we need a survey, an updated survey? And some.
Survey was concluded.
Oh, that's great news. Great.
Excellent.
All right, so so far, we've just looked at kind of the overall project layout and how this is going to interface with the existing site. What we really need to review further is the last approved plan to kind of see, you know, what the proposed change in lot coverage is and how it relates to any change in parking. We also under. Well, the, I think that the Board would need to debate that further, because you're expanding the capacity for the restaurant. I think a number that we heard was up to 50, and then you just said 35 additional people. So again, we just need to explore that further. I don't think that there's an expectation that you would have to provide any parking or reconfigure the lot, as long as it matches the last approved plan. I think everybody's aware that there's plenty of on-street and public parking facilities within the Hamlet of Jamesville. We just need to make sure that that is consistent.
I just think as, just as a Board, you know, it's, I think Stephanie's just trying to make it adaptive to the Board that we'll need to make some kind of finding about it because of it being the Hamlet. So we want to compare it, and then we want to make a finding.
That's right, thank you, Jamie.
And then we'll take into contemplation the sustainability of what the whole Hamlet, Jamesville Hamlet was intended to be, as we've done in the past. So we just want to make sure the I's are dotted, the T's crossed for future.
Well, the, the good thing is, I, I and a few other members of the Hamlet put in quite some time for the new master plan overlay for the Hamlet. This falls right in it. And this is something that was discussed with Sam Gordon, and I don't remember her name, that was brought in to do the master plan with us. So this is one of the key assets that was discussed in the past. So I'm pretty excited to see.
We want to make sure we're valid, too. That's all. Okay, any other questions?
I just wanted to go over that we will be looking at other details that would be supporting this, this plan change. I understand that there's going to be some modifications to the building exterior, such as new windows and a vent relocation to the roof. I'm also curious about lighting and what you're planning to do for that. As you're probably aware, there's pretty strict lighting codes in DeWitt, so we'll need all of that information from the type of fixtures to the hours that you're using it and the overall lighting levels. And as well as further details. I've noticed that on the plans, some of the arrows and descriptions point to these items being a little bit open-ended. Like it says, final materials to be selected by the contractor. I assume that's you. But again, all the details that we could get upfront with this specific information, like color and finish, I think that would make the approval a lot more simple.
Is there a possibility you can give give my company an email tomorrow with some specific requests? Because we will handle them efficiently and rapidly. We'll get everything you need.
That's exactly right. I've got a few draft comments brought together that we'll pass back to the town just to make sure they're consistent with our discussion so far. You should be seeing that subway tomorrow.
That'd be perfect. Everything you bring to our attention, we will address.
Great.
Also, this is, is being referred to SAPPA, correct? So we'll see if they have any comments.
And when, when with that, when we get back.
Thank you. I think it's a creative proposal, and we look forward to working with.
Yeah, Nick, did this go to SAKPA already?
That, that's correct. So the comment should come back June 2nd.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, Oliver, subdivision. Leif, is that the Allen House, the?
That is Eric, yeah, Eric and Meg's house in Skim.
Jamie, you want to set, set the stage on this?
Sure. Well, I see Mr. Oliver is.
Yes, how are you?
Hi. So it looks like what you're trying to do is correct maybe something that happened a long time ago where the garage got built over the existing property line. And a variance had been given so that the garage could be built a certain number of feet from the property line, but it actually ended up over the property line, I'm sure, inadvertently. So this would be a simple division. Once this happens, if it, if it does happen, the garage would, would still be in a non-conforming spot, but it is, has been pre-existing, so I would consider it a pre-existing, non-conforming structure that couldn't be expanded further, but it could certainly live where it is on its own lot if this is completed. So that, that's for the board's benefit. And Mr. Oliver, does that make sense?
No, it doesn't. Just to let you know, I am trying to enclose out, this is my dad's property, he passed away a year ago, so I've been dealt with these issues here, and I'm just trying to make this legal so I can sell the house, make everything legal for the new owners. So, you know, the best way from all the options I looked at was leaving the garage where it is and purchasing the additional property from the neighbor next door, and that seemed to be the most feasible in terms of buyer potential, too, because they like where the garage is located. So if I could go ahead with this, you know, proposed plan and get your approval, so then I can work with my attorneys to purchase the additional property that I need from the neighbor next door to make that part conforming on that side. I just want to wrap this up as soon as I can. I've had a lot of money invested now, the past year and a half, in the property, and this is something that I was not aware of and never knew that there was this overage problem.
Yeah, the, the way the fence is constructed, it probably led people to believe that was the property line.
Right. And I have spoken with the neighbor on the other side, which is the Barbogallo Group, and I told him that I would move the fence and either relocate it to the proper location on the property line or take the fence down in its entirety, and I know that the tool shed has to be taken down, so I know that that's got to be removed, too, to make that part conforming on his side.
So Jamie, what do we need to do to, what do you need? I know we don't, it's just a simple subdivision, I presume we don't need an informational hearing?
Well, I know that one thing, per Mark Parrish, is that if it's going, we still need, we need to have the other lot shown on the plan, otherwise we can't divide it. So your surveyor needs to add that?
I did show, well, I did submit the other survey from the owner next door. I don't know if you have that there, but then I can have him do a combined.
Yeah, well, we'll need a combined to.
Right. So I, I can't see the name of the surveyor on there, on your map.
And mine, it was McCauley.
Okay, so he can look, if, if you would be so kind to have him look at our subdivision regulations, then he'll see what needs to be on the map and how, how the meets and bounds need to show up and so forth. It's pretty straightforward, and I'm sure he's done it before, so he'll know what to do. So it's just a little bit different from a sub, from a, from a regular survey. It's a subdivision map.
Right, because that's what I had asked him for, and that's what I had just recently submitted, so I don't know if that.
It does.
Yeah, wasn't what you were looking for, so.
It might just, I think that it's just the, that that parcel needs to be shown.
Okay.
Because it gets filed ultimately, and it affects the other parcel, like what its dimensions are.
Yeah, Mark, this is, this is Andy Worden. I think the, the information that you have that is on this survey is, is what's needed to show along with the other industrial site to the left. So what he's drawn here is fine, but you need to combine that information with the other survey and have both lots on one map.
Okay.
Okay?
Are we satisfied that the smaller neighboring lot at this point doesn't have any adverse area issues?
I believe we are, yes.
Okay.
We discussed this, and Mark commented that he had no issues relative, other than the seeing this on one, one survey, both, both parcels.
Well, I can get that done and submit it to you as soon as possible, because I'd like to get going with this because I was.
We won't hold you up if we have all the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the next, the, we, if, if this comes in, I don't know what the, the timeframe is that we have for, for the submission for this next meeting.
Jamie, the next submission deadline is tomorrow. After that, the submission deadline is June 14th. So Mark, I'm not sure what your timeframe is to getting.
I would think we probably, because it's just a matter of adding that on, we can put it on for the next meeting, and if it comes within a week's time, we should be fine because everything's been reviewed, and it's just a technicality to get that other piece on, and then it would be a simple division finding. We don't need a public hearing if, if the rest of the board is amenable to that.
Let me just query the rest of the board. You know, Kevin?
I'm okay with it.
Joe?
I'm okay.
Leif?
Yep.
Kathy?
I'm fine with it.
Doug?
Yeah, looks good.
Yeah, me, too. So it, it's just, now it's just, you're getting the surveyor and maybe your legal counsel to get that together and get it tested, and we'll put you first on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
I also just wanted to remind everybody that the project was referred to SAKPA as well, so those comments are outstanding until June 2nd, I believe they'll be returned.
Okay, all right. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I don't know if you're allowed to as chair to make that motion, but.
I'm going to give you a motion.
I'm kidding.
I'll, I'll make the motion. Joe, make the motion.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. And once again, have a great Memorial, Safe Memorial Day weekend, and congratulations to everyone that's worked on the overlay for the Craven Drive. It's exciting, we're really looking forward to seeing the progress on this and, and phase two. Thank you all.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.
Hey, Andy, Andy, I have a question for you. Since we're talking about Jamesville, I've been meaning to ask, do you know what's going on with the Glenlock?